All right, six o'clock, so I'll call the Besire City Council Joint Regular Committee meeting to order for Thursday, March 5th, 2020. Members present are Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, James Mead, Candice Yokum, Doug Vogt, Lisa Alson. Bruce Truka is at it. Item number one, Besire City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by Myers at 6:00 PM. Item number two, public participation. If there's anybody that wishes to address us, you may step to the podium and give us your name and address. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is our order committee business. First up is the service committee, which I will call to order at 6:01 PM. And we have airport maintenance projects for 2020. And I knew you were here, right behind me. So Kevin DeTrey from the airport is here to present us with some information.
Okay, we do have a few new members here, so my name is Kevin DeTrey. I'm the airport manager. Just kind of not to replow old ground with the people that have heard this before, but for the new members, there's a program called AIR 21. It's a federal program. Every airport gets $150,000 a year in federal funds. You're allowed to accumulate that up to four years or $600,000, and then if you don't use it, you lose it type thing. The money is 90% federal. That grant is available, and then any grants that are applied using that program are then matched 5% by the state and 5% by the city. So we have 90 federal, 5% state, 5% city. So this program has been in effect for quite a while, and hopefully Congress will continue to fund it. Any questions on that? Okay, so for fiscal year 2020, myself and the airport commission, the members are Dave Shaley, Bud Logan, Fred Fisher, Kevin Locke, and Bobby Carter. These are the programs that we determined would be the best way to spend the money for the projects this year. Let me go back a little bit here. We did not use any federal funds last year in fiscal year 2019, and we had a carryover from fiscal year 2018 of $3,320. So this year, we have available to us in federal funds $3,300 or we got paid that amount. So item number one is the rotating beacon, green and white light you may see if you drive out by the airport. It's old, constantly requiring maintenance. Eric's been real good, Eric Clavie, the maintenance man coming up, maintaining it and so forth, but it's really time to replace it. And as you see on the sheet there, the engineering estimate is $10,000 to replace that, and the city share would be $500. 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local. Because it's pretty much a plug and play, there would be no engineering fees involved with that. Item number two, obstruction removal for runway 2-2 approach. Runway 2-2 is a runway that goes to the southwest. Runways are numbered by their magnetic heading. Runway 2-2 is 220 degrees. From the end of the runway, out several hundred feet, there's an obstacle-free area where you're not allowed to have anything sticking above ground level, basically. Once you get past that point, there's a trapazoid that goes out further, and then you have a 20-to-1 slope. For every 20 feet you go out, you can go up one foot vertically. Isaac Beale Road is an issue, not the road itself, but the FAA takes into account semi-trucks driving down the road. So they figure 15-foot, so a 15-foot truck on the runway becomes an issue for our instrument approach, and that's what this runway 2-2 approach is. When the weather is bad, we're allowed to descend down to 400 feet coming in on the approach. The FAA took that away from us at night. We cannot shoot that approach at night because of the potential conflict of a truck driving down the road, which everybody says, you know, well, should be able to see a truck. But when it's really foggy and rainy and misty, and you're doing 130 miles per hour and trying to find the runway and so forth, it can be, you know, it can be a little saturated. So there are several remedies for this. Number one is to reroute Isaac Beale Road, which really isn't practical. Number two is to displace our runway, which means instead of the runway beginning where it presently begins, is to displace the landing threshold down maybe 300, 400 feet down the runway. That way, you have to come in a little bit higher, give you more clearance over those trucks, but you lose usable runway. You're going to lose, it's a 3,900-foot runway. If we displace the threshold 400 feet, we're only going to have 3,500 feet available for landing. So in meetings and communications with the FAA, their fix for this is to put a pole along Isaac Beale Road, 15 feet tall, with a light, an obstruction light on top of it. That's their fix. To me, you're putting in obstruction where there's presently not an obstruction, but it's the FAA's money. This is the most practical and inexpensive way to go about it. So what we have, that's item number two there, the engineering estimate is $25,000 to do that, have to run electricity, put the pole, put the light, make sure it's engineered and set in the right place, that type of thing. And the city share would be $1,250 of that. And the engineering fees are $2,500 for that. So they kind of broke out the engineering fees here separately because we're going to have to have separate contracts for them. Item number three is to crack seal. We did a complete mill and fill on the runway in 2017. It was a $600,000 project. Part of that was funded by, the Horden family had donated some land to the airport, so we got part of that as our margin share plus some additional local shares. We're starting to get some small cracks, not big, small. Now's the time to take care of them before they do become big. Engineering estimate on that is $5,000. And once again, there's no engineering fees, no engineering involved in that. Item number four is taxiway, parallel to the runway, the taxiway. It's been in there at least 20 years. I forget the exact date it was put in. We're getting inch-and-a-half cracks in that. So it's getting to the point where it's going to require a complete mill and fill. And we're talking approximately an inch-and-a-half mill, inch-and-a-half fill with new asphalt. And you can feel it when you taxi it over it. There's some pretty good bumps and smaller airplanes, smaller tires and so forth. We just don't want it to start breaking up where we have to do a total reconstruction. It's cheaper to take care of it now. And the estimate on that is 95, or I'm sorry, $110,000, of which 95 is the actual contract, the contracting estimate, and then the $15,000 for the engineering. And Joyce can probably testify to this. The paperwork with the FAA, it's horrible. It's horrible. There is level after level after level after level of paperwork. We have a local asphalt contractor who really doesn't want to bid on our project just due to the paperwork that's required, and they haven't in some period of years. So it's pretty intense. The next item is some new fencing. Fence is getting old, worn down. The plan is to re-asphalt the automobile parking lot. This fence is adjacent to the automobile parking lot. Now's the time to replace it before the parking lot, the automobile parking lot is resurfaced. And so this would be new fencing. It would also meet the FAA requirements, which the present fence does not. A lot of airports are totally fenced in. You have to have keys and passes and so forth to get in. A lot of that is security. The rural airports, it's more of an issue of wildlife. They want it at least an eight-foot so the deer can't get in and so forth. Right now, they're really not pressing us on that. We don't have a real big wildlife issue, but that could change. So we want to start at least, if we're going to replace some fence, let's make it FAA compliant so we don't have to replace it again somewhere down the road should they dictate that. And that is $12,000 estimate to do the work, and then a $2,000 engineering. And because of the proximity to the runway, we do have to have engineering on it. We're building, we're putting a larger fence in where there's presently a shorter fence. Once again, FAA requirements. We just have to do it. It's our money, and we have to abide by that. The last item is a construction on the apron area. The FAA took away part of our parking area a few years ago because it's too close to the runway. They didn't physically remove it. We had to paint it, so airplanes aren't supposed to park there. Eventually, they're going to make us remove this part of asphalt where airplanes had been parking, but due to the proximity to the runway, it was too close, so they made us kind of X that off for no parking there. As a result of that, it has tightened up our available space for larger aircraft coming in to park. They take up pretty good majority of the apron area. We get a jet in there, and it makes it pretty tough for airplanes to get around them. And, you know, we're just worried about somewhere down the line, we could have a wingtip-on-wingtip incident or something, or somebody taxiing by and hit a multimillion-dollar jet, and that would not be good. So right now, there's a grass area that's probably 200 feet by 100 feet. That's really just not being used for anything. It's just kind of there. And so the plan is to remove that grass area, put new drainage under it, obviously, and then asphalt over the top over it, and that would give us additional parking space for these aircraft. I think it was last year, we had a, it's called a Citation XL jet come in. He stayed in for the weekend. It was during the summer, and where we had to park him, you could still see the indentations in the asphalt from the weight of the airplane sitting there and sinking in a little bit. Not a lot, but a little bit. When it rains, you can still see the indentation. So we want to make a better area for these larger planes to park, in particular, when they come in. So the engineering estimate on that is $150,000 total, of which $120,000 is the engineering estimate for the construction, and then $30,000 for the engineering fees. So what we have is a total, you can see it on the bottom there, is projected value of the engineering and the actual work being done itself is $314,000. And then you can see the breakdowns as far as state share, federal share, and local So what we need, and Rob, I need to talk to you about this, is there are actually four contracts that the engineering firm has, one for each of these projects here that are listed, a total $49,500. So Rob, do we need a contract or the council's authorization to enter into a contract for each of these or total?
Just with engineering.
Just with the engineer.
Yeah, no, you can, we can do one contract for the engineer. Engineering services are one of those things that are exempt from the, they require it. So we can do one contract with the engineers, authorization for Service Safety Director and enter into that agreement.
Okay. Now, another question I have is, there's only two manufacturers of these rotating beacons that are FAA-approved in the country. One of them is over at Mansfield, the NARCO. They are in the process of developing an LED rotating beacon. It's not certified by the FAA yet, but they're in the process of developing that. And so I approached them, I said, hey, can we be your test bed? You know, that way we wouldn't have to buy a beacon and use this as a test bed, and they would donate it to us. They're waiting on FAA approval, and then the powers that be have to decide if they would do that. So I guess the other thing I have is with these other projects, if the resolution can agree any or all of these projects, because right now, if we go ahead and approve it, and then we're able to get that beacon, and it's not, you know, and we have to eliminate what's in here that would be in the resolution as far as replacing the beacon, is that going to mess things up?
No, no, because we'll have a resolution authorizing Service Safety Director to enter into these. It's not mandatory ordinance that he's forced to do. It's just authorizing him to do so, so if he doesn't have to or doesn't use.
Okay, so if we, if we can, what I'm trying not to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. I don't want to lose all of these projects because the resolution says you have to do them all.
No, no, the resolution would just authorize him to do this amount. If he doesn't need to do part of it, then he just doesn't, and then that money at the end of the year will go back.
Okay, okay, very good. Questions?
Yes, sir.
So by putting up the pole and the light, we're not going to be shorting the runway that 3 to 4?
That is correct.
That was just one of their alternatives?
Yeah, that was an alternative, exactly. And that's the most practical way to go dollar-wise at this point, and for, I guess I can't overstress this, being able to get that approach procedure back for nighttime operations is very, very critical for us. We have one on the other end, but it's all wind-oriented. You take off and land into the wind. You don't want to land to the northeast when you have a southwest wind.
Are you still looking at solar power for that pole?
Well, I've done a lot of research, and everything I threw back to the FAA is, well, it's not FAA-approved. It's not FAA-approved, so we can't fund it. I mean, I was looking at, Kurt, getting, even gone over to Shelby, to the tower company there, and see if they would donate a 20-foot section of tower. We buried it five feet in the ground and put an obstruction light on top. You know, a red light, the solar power that you can buy for a couple hundred bucks. But even though if we did something like that, we could maybe fund locally because it wouldn't cost much, the FAA still won't accept it because the components are not FAA-approved.
Is this like a breakaway pole?
They would prefer to have something more frangible, yeah. If you hit a wooden wing, you know, it's more than likely going to, not go with a pole as opposed to.
Wait, is it a wood telephone pole, like?
They're open virtually anything, is what they told me. But the more we talked, and actually, our project manager with the FAA is very good, very understanding. He's a pilot, he understands. He would prefer to see something more frangible that, you know, you hit it, like the runway lights. You run off the runway, hit a runway light, they break off real easy. They're designed to do that.
I've got a quick question, just out of curiosity. I heard the number a couple of years ago, how many people go through that airport about a month about how many planes or week or day?
Yeah, you know, so much of it's dependent on weather, of course. We have a flight school, and, you know, if a flight school is busy, we get, an operation is a takeoff and a landing. So a takeoff and a landing is two operations. So you get students out there, bang, touchy goes and things like that. You could get 30 or 40 of that a day, you know, just if they're doing a lot of takeoffs and landings. Some days, the weather's bad, we don't see anything. But I would say if you kind of averaged it out, you're probably talking eight to 10 operations a day. Anybody else?
Joyce, am I correct that, if I remember, when we were going through budgets, this was already included?
Yeah.
I thought I remembered that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
So what we need from this committee is just a motion to authorize the Service Director to enter into contracts for engineering and purchase of the items that are already budgeted to coincide with the FAA grant.
Mr. Chair, for this request, and really for every request tonight in every committee, if we can determine now whether these pieces of legislation should be in emergency or not, that might be.
Very good. Time constraints on this, are there any?
The consultant would like to have all the paperwork in no later than maybe 18th to the FAA. But we can figure it's going to take them 30 days or so forth after they get the contract to kind of get this developed. So if it's something that can be done within the next four to six weeks, that would be great. So it's going to be tight.
We could suspend the second, they're reading it, pass it at the next council meeting, and then it'll go into effect by?
30 days from that date.
30 days from. About the third week in April.
Will that work?
Yeah, I'm sure the consultant, if they know things are coming, they'll go ahead and start on that. You know, they probably don't want to start the paperwork until there, some guarantee that there's going to be some money coming in, but I'm sure they'll get rolled once the resolution is passed.
Okay, so we have a motion, we're requesting this as regular legislation. Any other discussion? If not, all pairs, aye. Vote the same. That motion carries.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
All right, we'll recess the service committee at 6:22 PM.
And I'll call finance to order at 6:22. And we need to approve what we list, pass and service for finance. So I need a motion to accept this project in finance, but the money's already budgeted. So do you have a second? Second. All right, so there's no other discussions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. Okay, finance is done. You got, go and go to the council room. We'll vote to approve.
Thank you very much.
All right, subject number two, municipal property disposal.
Come see you, Jeff.
Yeah, this is just the annual ordinance that's required by ORC for us to participate in the GUD deals, online auctions, when we sell surplus stuff. Code requires us to do this every year. I don't live here, so I don't have that experience.
No, I've got to, I'm an authorized user on the town. We got some business that we have on there. I'm going to have to kind of fill in for Terry.
Yeah, but that's just required for us to do every year, to renew it every year. And probably should make the retroactive to January 1st.
The GUD deals that, like, we were able to buy the slide for the, were we?
Well, I know we were looking.
We were looking, they were looking at that. They can buy equipment, or we can sell equipment, or whatever we have. You want to sell the chairs, you can sell the chairs. But it goes on a GUD site that is authorized for.
The buyers are paying for it.
Don't feel that, I just asked the same question.
Are these replacements for, like, the auctions you used that all?
Yes. Gets a more wider variety of people seeing on the GUD deals.
Occasionally, you'll probably get an email or two from the founder that GUD deals actually, he sends to just municipality people that are in municipalities, will send an email explaining kind of what they do and how they work and all that, too.
Okay, there's no other questions? Any kind of motion? Make this retroactive to January 3rd? That's a second.
And again, Mr. Chair, regular, regular emergency.
It's your call. I mean, we're going to make it retroactive, so.
They can still do it, right?
No, we can't sell anything.
Can't sell anything until it passes, but do we have anything?
We're not running the press right now. We have some business, we can get on there, but we can wait until it passes. That's fine.
Okay, regular legislation. So if there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Mr. Key.
Yes, sir.
I will try to print out where we are today on the amount we sold.
Okay.
Down and up, trying to get it into pie. But you guys are going to get a copy of it.
Okay, and Joyce, it's your turn.
It's my turn, okay. Okay, we need trouble appropriations in the general fund, in Program 1, security persons and properties in the police department, $2,990.10 in materials and supplies. And what this money is from, there's $1,590.10 from donations made for Safety Town, and $1,400 for donations to start the police department LEAP program. And LEAP stands for Law Enforcement Ally Program. And this is peer-to-peer officer counseling. And this is totally funded by donation, so it's just a pass-through in our accounts. So that's what totals the $2,990.10 for materials and supplies. Then also, $1,831 into capital outlay, and that is from the fundraising the police department has done for the K-9 program. So we need to appropriate that to the K-9 line in the budget. And that's all I have.
Do we need to make this an emergency?
Yes, it involves money. It's an emergency. Always an emergency.
Somebody entertain a motion to make this an emergency legislation to appropriate the money, $2,990.10 to materials and supplies, and $1,831 to capital outlay. Okay, have a first and a second. There's no other questions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passed. And there's no other question else. I will adjourn at 6:28, and call finance at 6:28. Finley Hill, Eastman's. We made a mistake, so we got to correct it.
Yeah, and we kind of went backwards, and I guess my apologies, I wasn't there at that meeting, but the land, that hillside there in front of Arby's is going to, so that's definitely, the Arby's, anyways, Arby's, the owner of. Anyways, Arby's, the owner of Arby's owns that land.
That's everywhere.
It's everywhere, okay. So they are putting this display with an apple and some trees and some stuff. And they need to get, but not us to give them these because it's their land. Because we're going to be taking on maintenance and management of that once they put it in. Big fiberglass apple and some other stuff. So we'll be maintaining it and, and I think plan is that volunteers do it, but we'll be responsible for it, we'll be maintaining it. So the, it's, flip the wrap, so we have to, we have to, public plans and buildings, plating really doesn't have too big a play in it because we're not giving an easement, we're taking one. So ultimately it's gonna, plating, probably, probably is going to agree to accept easement. Public plans and buildings is going to agree to accept the easement of the thing that they built there and...
Question, is this a perpetual easement? Is a timeframe ninety-nine years plus an optional, or is this indefinite?
It, it would be a permanent easement for, for that display. They're going to be bringing that to us because we're going to be the ones in ring the land to maintain it. We may even put it for twenty-five years or a hundred or whatever, but plan is for it to be there forever, so it would be a perpetual easement. That'll give us, authorize us to access and maintain the app.
Question?
No, I, I, like I told you guys, I've heard this whole project presentation, and I know, I know the person that built the apple. Elwood Gettler actually constructed the apple.
Right. I need a...
I'll make a motion then.
And now we need, how soon do you need, there's no emergency on this, is there?
No, because they're going to be in construction, they're, they're going to be doing their work on their property, we're not...
We'll have to wait on money for their easement, right?
Yeah, and we'll have to, I mean, we're not going to do anything until it's up to construct the operating, the operating, what is there. So, I mean, we've got plenty of time.
Okay, we can wait the second, third reading and just not declare the emergency and make it go into effect immediately.
I don't even know that we would need to do that. I mean, they're your roles, you could, you could, I, I don't know that we'll need to because they, they've got to start construction. I mean, they were waiting to start construction to make sure that we were willing to look after it once it's up there. And, you know, they know that we're on that path, they'd go ahead and start construction. It'll be awful if we get in there.
Say it's a regular right now. So, so we made a motion. There's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 It's okay, sometimes it's just that.
All right, motion passed. Another easement, what about this power pole?
Yeah, and I, I don't know that I get it, but there are power poles that are in the Picking Park that are not usable for the purpose of the line that they need for this charging station. There is a power pole in Picking Park that would be usable, and it's in the right place, but it is a city power pole. So they can't use our power pole to meet their requirements. They want to put a power pole next to our power pole, a little power wire, and run the wires to that, and that'll connect to the charging station. So they would like for us to grant an easement to allow them to put in a different pole. And they attached a copy of the easement that they, that they would like for us to grant, a picture of where they're going to put it. And so even just do a, an, a resolution authorizing the service safety director to enter into this, this or, the easement, to grant the easement. I think this one does need to be an emergency because they are starting construction on the other stuff from the deadline and all that.
Before you make a motion.
No, I was gonna make a motion, I was just gonna ask him this one question too.
Prompt, we don't know the answer.
My one question is, maybe Jeff you could answer. Can't they just, instead of having two poles there, can we not just have them take our pole out and replace it with their pole that they require? And instead of having two poles sitting right beside each other, which kind of looks...
The, the very limited understanding I have is that they need their type of pole for their stuff, I mean, it's kind of like FAA requirements. Whether or not we can ultimately take ours out and put our stuff on theirs, kind of a cross easement situation. That may be something we can discuss with them after the fact. But for now, they need space to put up their own pole that meets their standards and their requirements.
You, you have any idea on this?
All you need to do is get a hold of the master, I'm telling you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, you're dealing with people that are in Columbus and who don't care.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's one of those things, it's kind of like...
What's Greg got to say?
He's laughing.
I just, I, I agree. With funny people side by side.
I do have a question.
That's a question to Ross. Yeah, it's gonna be, I mean, is there, we don't have a choice basically, we're at this point in this juncture of this, so pretty much we have to do what they want us to do, or we're gonna kill the whole deal, right?
No, we don't want to kill the deal, just don't tell anybody it was our idea.
Yeah, you know, they, they're adding a lot, they're putting a lot of stuff on it, and what their, what their explanation to us was that, you know, it's... Yeah, there are other poles that they already had there would be overloaded, but putting this new stuff in there, they couldn't do a third voltage to the existing poles. I don't know that the pole that we have there meets their standards for what, what they're putting on it. I don't know how big a transformer and a four-eighty voltage thing is. Yeah, you know, I wouldn't want our, yeah, that's exactly, I wouldn't want our pole to fall over with their stuff on it.
I would just wonder.
It'd be something to look into though, if, like you said, if we could eventually tie into that other pole with them. And maybe we do that, take that other pole out, leaving that parking lot.
What's on our pole? I have no idea.
I'm gonna have to...
I think they like...
If I remember right, I think they like...
Parking lot, yeah. So our, our pole may be surplusage and be able to leave the pole light over there. Well, we can, when they, when they come to install this, we can, we can ask them about it.
We should have a couple of them while you need them.
I mean, I think, we'll ask them about it.
But the gist of it is that they need their pole for their...
Okay. All right, do you have a second? Second?
Do you make a motion or a second?
I made a motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second to grant A T P easement for replacement of a pole. At the parking, with parking lot design one? Two? Six? No. Number six, parking lot number six on Washington Square. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. See if you definitely can try to get it so we have one full where. Yes, that is an emergency. Because of the timeframe. All right. Sidewalks.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can, I can take this. This is a little bit of a conundrum. Last year, the previous council requested the council clerk to look into the feasibility of applying for a grant or grants to repair a problem sidewalk on South New Street near the elementary school and by the laundromat there. We've got a number of complaints, you'll see here, the latest complaint from the last one. There is a law on, on our books in our contract where it says nine oh five oh one, which you have attached as well. It was passed in nineteen sixty-four. Although the code enforcement officer in the law director's office is responsible for enforcing most, pretty much all code violations regarding property, private property, the city council is responsible for enforcing the condition of sidewalks. So I looked into the, before I go there, you also notice that five twenty-one oh three and five twenty-one oh four make it clear that the law ordinance has the property owners responsible for the condition of their sidewalks. There is also a state ordinance, which is O R C seven-two-nine oh one, which is essentially the same thing. The private property owners are responsible for the maintenance of their sidewalks. I looked into the possibility of grants for the repair of damaged sidewalks, there are none for the repair of existing sidewalks because of these ordinances. There are a number of grants available for the construction of sidewalks, damaged sidewalks, and for the construction of sidewalks where there are gaps between there's a sidewalk and not a sidewalk. C B D, committee development block grants, for instance, are those, the administration applies for those every year, and they're doing so again this year. So there are no grants available that I can find for the repair of existing sidewalks on private property. So that leaves us in a situation where we can continue to do, we haven't enforced this law as long as I've been here, in four years, and probably not long, probably not before that. We can continue to do that and probably get complaints about this sidewalk and perhaps some others. We can look into nine oh five oh one, whether we want to keep that on the books or, or not, or whatever. We can expend private funds, or first, we expend, expend city funds to repair the sidewalk, that sets up a precedent that might be problematic because there are other sidewalk owners who might be less to pay for their sidewalk as well. That's basically where we're at, and a number of larger cities, you'll see attached here, Marysville has a sidewalk improvement program. These are usually larger cities with more assets than we have, Columbus does it as well, I think Cleveland does. They set up their own grant program where people can apply through the city grant and get money to pay for sidewalk repair. I know that there is a grant, chip grant, is that a federal grant program? Chip grants?
State?
A state program?
That's state.
What do you say, state?
Yeah, I know that's for property improvements, I don't know if that would include the sidewalk repair, or now they know that would include the property.
That's more structural housing.
Right, and that's something the property owner applies for. So that's essentially where we're at on that issue, and those are our options that I know of, and maybe others, you know, but that's where we're at.
I can't think, C N C or C I C or?
Yeah, the C I C.
Yeah, the C I C, isn't that what that's for? Or is that, stop the pride? That's for us to put into the city budget and spend it as we may need. Money goes to the general fund if the C I C transfers it back to us.
Which is a way that it's designed for this point in time.
No, it was not.
Yeah, those folks are looking at capital improvement, the city.
Right, right. I just asked, I didn't know exactly what the C I C is.
Yes.
I don't know many, but I'm curious. Have we had instances like this, and maybe it comes out of your office, or your office, but when, when you get a complaint on it, are we sending a letter out to them and it's, it's like property owner, that is their responsibility just to see if they might go ahead and fix it on their own?
Uh, we, we could, we, we get lots of complaints and, and it's one of those things that falls under the province of this body. If you wanted to transfer that obligation to the property maintenance dispatcher, we could do that. Spend very much portion of the time sending out those letters.
I, I, we know this, man, I know that this particular one's bad enough that we've got a city road barricade over top of it. So I mean, it's, it's obviously in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, we have some pretty bad ones too.
Yeah, this one is not very good. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've thought about the sidewalks a lot and I don't, I don't think we should spend any money repairing a sidewalk at our expense because that takes away from the people that already have invested that money. Because then they're gonna say, you know, why didn't I get a free sidewalk? But I, I do kind of like this, this Marysville thing where if we set up a separate fund or something, you know, maybe people will donate money into it and have like a sidewalk commission and have residents in town sit on this sidewalk commission, then if somebody is cited for their sidewalk being out of compliance, but they've got a financial burden, maybe they could apply through that sidewalk commission to have their sidewalk paid for by like a city-funded grant. That we wouldn't be putting money into, maybe it was like, people would donate money to this sidewalk commission program. That was just an idea I had. That way you're, because we need to, like, this particular sidewalk is, it's an out-of-town rental landlord, I think, that owns it, right? It's not? It's not the one that's right on the corner there of Hopley? Oh, it's on the laundromat side, I thought you were talking the other side.
The other side wasn't too good either.
But once we get something like that set up, if we, if we set it up, then we could start enforcing the sidewalk being out of compliance, and at the same time not burdening the people that can't financially afford it if they got this grant program going at the same time. Because then they could apply for the grant, and people sitting on that sidewalk commission can decide, okay, this money this year would be best spent in this area, stuff like that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, but I did want to explain a little bit more of what you said about the C I C. If they transferred, for instance, transferring the parking lot to the C I C and then selling that, if the city decided they wanted to allow the C I C to hold those funds, the C I C could set up grants to residents for certain projects and things like that to fix up their properties or sidewalks. Would that matter?
I would say as long as their financial is trapped.
Well, I also believe people don't have the extra money to do something like that. They're not just saying, yeah, they're not even doing it themselves either.
You're just going to do the C I C for something developed purposely to save a partial. We'd have to get some, some of this, some of this land they love their own.
Mr. Chair, one option I didn't mention that we can exercise is to enforce nine oh five oh one, which is to cite the property owner for the damaged sidewalk. Just because we haven't done that in four plus years, that's not like we can't. It would be council's responsibility to do that. If we really changed that law to make it no longer council's responsibility, I mentioned that to the zoning administrator, he was a little skeptical on that proposal simply because of the number of sidewalks in this town that are in bad repair. As the law director may attest, a few summers ago, we did, we had the chip paint program. We got a few complaints about that. This kind of goes into the same territory, now there are a lot of bad sidewalks, but there are a lot of people who can't afford repairing sidewalks. So those are the other options that are on board, on the sidewalk, sorry, I mentioned.
It is a hundred dollar day fine, up to a hundred dollars a hour.
I mean, once, once it's signed, once we, once I write the letter and we cite them, then it goes into your office and it goes from there.
I know some people that were affected by the chip paint things and these things and stuff, and it's just, like Lisa was saying, there's some people that can't financially afford it, it's not that they're being, they don't want to do it, and they don't, they're not physically capable of doing it on their own, so I like the idea of coming up with a program to...
I would be, since this is something council would have to cite somebody for violation of a sidewalk, I, I wouldn't be in favor of citing anybody until we have some sort of program set up for the, if we do this grant thing where somebody can apply for a financial hardship reason to have, otherwise you're gonna have people get cited that can't afford it.
When's, when's the last time they cited someone for something like this?
Since I, I, I will look back, and I have no record of council doing this. I did do some research on ordinance twenty-seven seventy-eight, which was passed in June of sixty-four, as to, under the minutes to see why, maybe there was some justification. I found no mention of it whatsoever, this one has been a law that is stated in books and has been used certainly other laws, and this one just kind of overlooked. And I could find no mention of any justification for this.
This particular sidewalk has something from the city across today?
Parking barricade.
So we've...
No, we didn't cause.
Okay. No, but I meant, we allowed them to, we took something out there to...
Yeah, we, we supplied them with the barricades, but that's like six months ago. See, they said there's a large tree there.
And the roots busted the sidewalk. So repairing the sidewalk's really not going to do any good until the tree's actually removed.
Tree board can take care.
Tree's the responsibility of property owners, well.
And this property owner isn't local?
Yeah, he is local. My only question is, because it's a business and not a residence, I don't know if that makes a difference, but can we just start by making a phone call or sending a letter? And just, hey, can we, is that the time to talk, what's your plan, or can you try to mitigate it that way without?
It's, it's your ordinance.
We, we have to, does have to, since it's our ordinance, does have to come from Congress.
Does come from Congress. Whose ward is that in?
Candy, it's candy's problem. I could even try that. Just hop over tomorrow and see. Do you know who it is? Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna be, yeah, get a hold of me after noon tomorrow, I should be able to.
Well, we don't have a side on this immediately, because this has been going on.
Well, we don't have a side on this immediately, cause this has been going on since like.
Thanks for chasing more.
Yeah.
I think we can try to find more information to see what we can do. The one question I did have was if, like Doug said about private donations or whoever's got private donations for it, that could possibly be done through the community investment.
Maybe through community foundation.
Community, oh yes, I've done that. And they can, we wouldn't have any legal ties to that and it wouldn't have to come up, it wouldn't be.
No, but I mean, you're, you're making an assumption that, you know, you're gonna get ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year just donated for people to fix up their sidewalks.
Well, I, I'm not assuming.
I mean, for, for the effect of, I mean, that's, that's.
Maybe we'll all get a little bit thirty thousand dollars.
And, and you know, at the end of the day, especially, well, and especially in that neighborhood, you know, I, with all due respect to the people that, that, you know, that are fixed incomes and, and the sidewalks have built up over time and can't afford it and stuff like that, there, there's two, you're weighing two things. The, the, the ability of that homeowner to be able to afford to fix those sidewalks and the ability of the children that are walking that path to school not have to walk out to the street. So, you know, you're pick which one you're gonna err in favor of.
Correct. If we can find twenty thousand dollars to put into a tree program, we, I think we can find twenty thousand dollars here to put into a sidewalk improvement program.
Disagreeing with you.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
But, you know, we need to investigate this and it, we gotta set guideline somehow because it's kinda hard to say, well, we'll just do it for these people here, but we won't do it for the others.
That's, that's why I need to set up your grant.
Potential financial, I mean.
Threshold that they have to be at, that they get this.
I mean, I can replace my own sidewalk, my parents can. My income goes up and down when.
I do have one question, Jeff, you may know, is this, I think this was before you run. When they redid East Street, they redid all the curbs and the sidewalks.
That was before me.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I know we did it.
Could, could you look into that because I remember I lived on East Street when they did that and the contractor offered to the residents a very inexpensive cost to the concrete that they put for the sidewalks. I mean, it was, you couldn't even do it yourself for that, what they offered.
Did they do that when they did like the addition to the school?
When they tore the school down?
Well, they didn't really tear it down.
Yeah, the higher school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they don't want to the middle.
But when they did East Street, they redid.
Is that about the same time they did that though?
I can't remember.
Close to the same.
Close, it was twelve, it was thirteen years ago.
Yeah.
Thirteen years ago that they did East Street and they supposed they were gonna widen it, but they never widened it. But anyhow, they did new curbs and new sidewalks and they offered, I remember when I was renting my house there, the landlord was able to get it and it was, he couldn't even do it for himself. If, if we started this grant program and had people on, on the commission of it that are residents and, you know, like retired council members or something, I would be willing to donate my salary for being on council this year to initially fund this program. I think we need to get some more information before we move on with this one. That's a good idea. I thank you for that offer. If there's no other discussions, I think we'll table this one to get some more information on how we can fund this and how we can manage it. So if, if nothing else, I will adjourn, plating at six thirty.
Okay, I, Public Lands and Buildings Committee, six fifty six, and we are talking also about the Finley Hill easement. And since we've already went into that, would it be okay just to do a motion to accept the new easement and how it was stated?
Yeah, it's a motion to accept the, the easement and, and maintain the, the display.
Um, does anyone have a motion to accept the new easement and display for Finley Hill?
Second.
Okay, so we will move on to the AEP easement. I'm sorry.
Point you have a vote, cause there's only three of us who can have a vote.
I guess, I guess, okay. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The Finley Hill easement next on to the AEP easement, which we just went over in the plating committee. Does anyone have anything else to add to that right now? Um, we did have a motion to make an emergency due to the timeframe that they're working with. So I would, does anyone wanna make a motion to?
You wanna make me?
Resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed saying nay? Motion passed and I adjourned at seven fifty seven, or six fifty seven?
Well, help save the order at six fifty seven. Ambulance services first topic and we had started a discussion Tuesday night. Do you wanna pick up what we left off a little bit, Kurt? Well, just at the last EMS board meeting, it was made well aware that the provider is not supplying three paramedics like they're supposed to at all times. They cited a couple of times and it's due to a nationwide shortage on paramedics. They can't even find somebody to hire right now.
Was that what the provider told you?
That's what the, the station manager said. I mean, it, he said there might've been five times in January or past month or something. They had two paramedics, they had a paramedic on two of the trucks each and then the third truck had two EMTs on. So you're the EMS guy, so what does that mean for us?
Well, a couple of things it means, it's, you know, when we're looking at, just look at facts that, you know, we're part of a group that's paying for a service and we're not getting the service that we're paying for. So that's, that's one fact that we have to consider. What does that do? Well, it does do things, it might overburden, I don't want to use the word overburden, but put more responsibility on our fire department to pick up some extra slack. And I don't know if you guys can speak to that or have you seen an increase in call volume in the last month or two over what we? Kevin, you, you can speak to. Yeah, I don't know if you've seen an, an increase in call volume for actual runs that you're actually doing the transporting on over.
Actual transport?
Yeah, where they don't have a paramedic ambulance available. I know they're calling, they're calling you guys most days to let you know when that's happening.
Right, we haven't seen a significant increase in call volume that I am aware of.
Hey Gregor, Kevin, are, are they calling you to put you more on standby anymore than, wait, I talked about, that's what he said. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, there, there were a, a few times where, you know, I mean, they did call and notify us. We regularly get put on standby. And I, I don't think that they're getting caught short. I'm not monitoring all three days, obviously. I'm monitoring one shift, our shift, so I got a, a third of the pool of what's going on. And there are sometimes that they have called, notified us that they only have one medic on duty during certain timeframes, but they are at least good in, in making sure that we understand that so that if we're watching the calls, we can see how that's coming out.
That's just really, that's good for them. I'm glad that they're doing that because that, that's allowing them to know what to prepare for before you need to be doing it, so.
Right, the last thing we wanna do is, one, not know that it's our call because we have a protocol that we follow. So if it's, if we're not notified that we're the standby crew and it's not a protocol run, you and I know that we're not going on it. If they don't notify us and put us on standby, then we aren't going on the run and they're not either. Somebody's not getting service and that's, that's bad.
Yeah, the dispatcher will come back and ask you about two minutes later if anybody's en route yet and then when they don't answer them, that's when they're gonna, so two to three to four minutes into the emergency is when you're gonna figure that out. So that's why I'm glad that they're at least notifying you that. So, and this has been a topic for the last couple of years and one of the things that we know that we've been discussing is that, and Kurt brought up, well, I think it was last night, the current providers already said that, you know, if they had to redone this today, it's gonna be triple the cost. They're, they're not financially, you know, meeting the goals that they thought they were when they did on this contract. So we know the costs are gonna go up. You know, the option to do it ourselves is one of the things we've talked about before. We chose not to do that two years ago mainly for manpower reasons. So what we're trying to do now is come up with a plan to where we can increase our, our manpower and be able to have, you know, an appropriate staffing level to be able to take this on ourselves. And I know that Mr. Rattler has brought it to our attention that the way that the higher vice code works is that we have to leave an ambulance district. And if, if we left today, let's just say, well, that doesn't become effective until January first of twenty twenty one. So with the contract that we're in now expires October thirty first or, or November first at midnight of twenty twenty two, so we would have to leave the ambulance district sometime during this calendar year so that we're not in the district when that contract ends. If they were to start a new contract, we could be tied to a new three-year contract. So if we're gonna make the decision, leave, it has to be done during this calendar year. Knowing that the townships are gonna have to figure out what they're doing and they've expressed this to us, they'd like to know from us sooner than later what we're gonna do and I think we owe that to them. I think that's fair for us to make a decision sooner than later. I think we really need to, to be moving on this and, and come up with a, a plan and a decision within the next month so that we can, one way or another, let them know what our intentions are so they can start making their plans for what they're gonna be doing. Twenty twenty two sounds like a long ways away, but it's really not, you know, especially all the planning that's gonna have to go into this, so. So in front of you, do you wanna get into this tonight, Kurt or?
Well, I, I would say we did take it on ourselves. What is that going to do to the city's budget? What is our estimated revenue from the billing? How much additional revenue are we gonna come up with? Cause you can't just pull out of this thing and not have a plan on how you're gonna pay for it. And, and, and I, the other thing I'll say is the townships are really pushing us to give them an answer sooner than later on, are we in or are we out? Because it's gonna take them at least, I would say, at least six months to throw together a plan.
Right.
Of what they're gonna do if we're not in the district anymore.
Can you do something that the townships could be part of, part of this and pay some money to be part of this?
They could, um, and that's surely something I would offer them. I don't see that they would want to take us on that, but you don't know to you, so I, you know, that's one of the things I've talked with Mr. Rattler about this couple of times, that was one of my suggestions was that, you know, we should at least make that an offer to them.
But I think we have to have our plans.
That's what our current followers, yeah.
Well, we have, we have to have plans set in place on how the heck we're gonna do it and then we offer it. We keep them informed.
Right. Are, are you prepared, I, either of you two, are either of you guys prepared for us to have another sit down and see where we can?
Well, I, I would wanna check the calendar tomorrow, but I would think here in a couple of weeks, we tend to be looking at March twentieth at eight thirty in the morning, uh, council president, well, we can't have, I mean, we have, this is just a planning meeting, but, you know, we were hoping to do it like Friday morning at eight thirty on the twenty.
Aye and.
Yeah, just, you know, to sit down and, hey, if they would pull off late, you know, we're gonna have to do what we gotta do there for emergency, but.
What was the date?
Uh, March twentieth, twenty, Friday. Give that work for everybody that we need to have their thing, so. That's two weeks from tomorrow, correct?
That'll get me. All right, well then, I would say based on how that conversation goes, we could probably then bring this back to the next committee meeting. Immediately after that.
So that's gonna be right after a committee meeting, that Friday? Cause there's a committee meeting on nineteenth, so maybe we should have it sooner. We can, we can have another committee meeting after that.
Yeah.
And we, cause you're gonna have a two week break in between this next council meeting and the one after that, so we could schedule a committee meeting in the week of the twenty third or something.
We have a public meeting on the twenty third, zoning, or zoning request public here. That's on the twenty third.
What time is that?
Six.
So you could do it after.
Yeah, or we could technically schedule that at six thirty or something.
I just, I just wanna say, I, I looked through the whole general budget last week and we do not have any wiggle room on adding any personnel with the existing budget.
Correct.
In any of the safety forces. And the thought of, would the townships pay us to provide service to a couple of them? I highly doubt they are, would do that just because they are buying ambulances themselves.
And if they did, that amount of money we would get off of isn't even come close to touching what we need, so. Sadly, that's a big plan is we'll sit down on that day and then we can schedule that.
Is it, is that a private meeting or public?
Well.
On the twentieth or the twenty third? Oh, so there's two meetings now?
Well, we just talked about, after we meet on the twentieth, we can, we could have a, a full meeting to come and present what we think might work.
So the first one would just be Mary and I, the law director, the service director, the mayor.
We can roundtable it, see what we can come up with some plans to bring in to discuss at the meeting, I think that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest waiting to schedule the special health and safety meeting on the, until the nineteenth, just in case between now and then that meeting changes or gets held back or doesn't happen or whatnot. I'll make a note of it and then, so we can talk about, we can set it up on the twenty third of the meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any questions for pilots in the main hall?
All right, well, I'll recess the health and safety committee meeting at seven oh eight PM. And call the ad hoc committee on council rules from receivers to order at seven oh eight PM. And we had finished the rules and now we have the codified ordinance section of one eleven to one thirteen to get through. And if you look in your packages, it's at the bottom of the second page in there, one eleven point oh eight. Law director suggested that we change the wording to four members of council constitute a quorum while three members of any committee constitute a quorum as a committee. Cause nowhere in there did it mention what a quorum was of the committee, only on the council itself, so that puts that into perspective. One eleven ten, permission required for leaving a session. We had removed this from one of the previous rules because it was gonna be addressed here in the ordinance. No member of council or any city official seated within the council chambers or any shall be permitted to leave council while in session without permission from the presiding member. That was in the rules and in the ordinance, but it was different in each area, so this way it just puts it only in the ordinance and it has for council people and for city officials. Any questions on this first?
Any questions on this or student?
Let me, let me ask presiding members, that you mean?
So in, in like, if this exists right now, I'm the presiding member of this committee.
But you didn't state that it's a committee or in that ordinance too, that applies to committee?
Right, that's why it says presiding member based on, so on a Tuesday night, that's you. On a Thursday night, it's two members leading the committee.
Should you say to leave council meeting or a committee meeting?
We can, I mean, Rob, which is us.
It, it's up to you, Mike, you can say it either way. If you're gonna have it by a presiding member, then you probably don't wanna specify that that means both council and committee. And then, just for the clarification on city official, do you mean appointed officials or elected officials?
According to this, it's both as anybody seated within the railings, so that would be the mayor, the service director, yourself, auditor, fire chief, lead chief when they're here.
I'm not sure what your authority is over appointed officials.
What, what elected official?
Other than me, I'm not sure if you, what your authority is over the mayor, the finance director either or auditor.
Anybody at this table?
Yeah, I mean, cause I have, there's a, there's a special provision in the code that says I have to come.
Right.
That's why I'm here. No, so I, I don't know what your, I don't know. I, I think your wording's fine in.
But these are, they're talking to you.
Yeah, with, with elected, you know, I'm just trying to think about it.
He doesn't want it to pertain to him.
Yeah.
If they have to, the, um, the off, the city officials, officer, elected officials and officers are a little bit different. And like the service safety director.
He's appointed.
He's appointed by the mayor, so he's kinda like.
He's just left, what's he into?
Yeah.
He just walked out without.
So, yeah, so like.
Let's just decide punishment.
Yeah, so they're. You're, I think, I, I, I'm just struggling with the exact wording. I mean, I, I get what you're trying to do and I think it's all, I'm just struggling with the exact wording.
You wanna sit there and think about it and go circle back?
No, I mean, I think what you, I think the gist of it is, is you want, no member, no member of council or elected official.
Or any elected city official, elected.
Well, and, and we'll have to see what your authority is over those two positions.
Mayor.
Yeah.
The mayor's not actually required by Ohio Vice Code being everywhere else.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, so when they come.
I would just say.
Your ability to hold hostage, you know, you'd be the same.
Just, just need a little council.
We can do that, I mean.
Yeah, I, you're, you're clearly within your rights with, with no member of council during the committee or.
Could you, could you check into it further?
I will, I'll, I'll look, I'll look into it. And I know I'm separately covered under ORC that I have to attend.
He's to protect us.
As opposed to a state council.
You're, you're here to protect us from making stupid mistakes.
Check into it and think about it and just let us know what you, how you wanna word that.
Okay.
111-218, order of business, the only thing changing here is we've added the indication and that actually, we've got the error on there, it goes before the pledge and I typed it up wrong. So the indication comes right after we're called to order. When you see the asterisks there next to the reported standing committees, that's something that we need to discuss, uh, whether we are going to read minutes or not read minutes, be required to, not required to. Kurt, I'll ask your input, Todd, I'll ask your input, and Rob, I'll ask your input on that topic.
You ask me first?
Go ahead.
I, I did, I did some checking and there's a lot of councils that don't read those minutes. They just straight approve them or disapprove them. They, they've been circulated well in advance before the meeting and, um, I don't see any reason to drag it out if the minutes are readily available for viewing before the meeting. If we weren't distributing them before the meeting, I definitely would say.
Right. Well, I think we talked too that they, they really should be approved by the committee that created them, not by council as a whole.
And I, and Mr. Pinkhouse, when I talked about this, uh, this week or last, and I had a question for the law director on this, regarding the committee minutes and when they're approved, um, can we essentially keep the committee minutes and their approval in the committee meetings and not interfere with the Tuesday minutes? In other words, plating meant tonight, can plating rather than the next Tuesday approve those minutes, can they approve those minutes the next time they meet, which would be a Thursday? And then after those minutes are approved, then they'll go into the regular council minutes that I write out?
Yeah, that's, that's been my concern all along, I mean, since, since I've been here, is that the, the body that generates the minutes never approves their own minutes, it gets approved by, by this body, and then they're read into the, the record of the next council meeting prior to that body approving them. So we're always kinda bringing something in and, you know, are they ever really that wrong? No, but, you know, it's still, it's a procedural thing. With respect to the committee reports of the standing committees, I mean, yeah, I mean, that you can.
I kinda like how we've been doing where we just kinda give a summation, a verbal summation of what, what we've been working on.
I, I don't know of any council that reads the, reads the three minutes, so.
I got a question. You're saying, you know, clarify me on this, so we can't do any legislation until those minutes are approved?
No, no, it has nothing to do with legislation. The, the minutes are not, the, the legislation's requested coming out of that committee and.
Sign that form.
Yeah, and so.
Through, but I'm saying, I'm, that's what I'm getting confused as we don't approve the minutes.
The minutes are just a record of what happened.
Right.
So the legislation request still happens without the minutes having to, it happen?
See, we're not even technically required to keep minutes, are we? Are you, are you biohazarding?
I mean, you can just keep it full audio.
So in, in that scenario, there wouldn't be no minutes to approve, there would be holding up legislation.
Yeah, the, the minutes in the legislation are separate.
I just clarify.
So in other words, if we were to do this, plating meant tonight, um, when we, when council meets again on March 17th, they will, the whole council will not approve this plating for the minute. When plating meets on, say, March 19th, the first order of business for them will be to approve the minutes from, from March 5th. And if they don't meet on March 19th, then it'll be the first meeting of April. And once they've done that, the next time we have to go around for the Tuesday minutes that I write out, those minutes, we have to have, I have to have a permanent record of the committee minutes somewhere. So they have to be in the Tuesday minutes at some point. It doesn't have to be the next meeting, it can be a month from now, whatever the committee meets again. But for my purposes, I need, and for ORC's purposes, I need to have those committee minutes in a permanent record. And even though, as the law director says, we only need an audio recording, I'm gonna, I will continue to write out the minutes because I get requests for information on a daily, sometimes hourly basis, and all I have is the audio recording that's not working.
I, I stopped up one day as the last week and talked to Todd here about the, the minutes and where they can be stored and if we don't put them in the, the regular council meeting, he, basically you have kind of one of our set of filing cabinets in there. So it'd just throw them in there and do a way to document them and keep them on record and.
Have we done that a hundred years? I mean, that's, that's been.
And, and that's kinda what you do with the treasurer's report and like that, you just, you have a section in the agenda where you adopt, accept the treasurer's report.
My expense of file it a month or two later.
Yeah, except.
And so for the purpose of this conversation, I think we've all figured out then that we can just continue to give a, a verbal report of the committee and not read any minutes as what, what we're addressing tonight.
And approve on the next committee meeting.
Does that need to be added into the codified ordinance or does that just need to be a procedural thing that we're gonna approve them at their next?
That's a question I have as well.
No, I mean, I think that's purely a procedural thing. We don't, I don't think we have any here, or it is about putting the approved minutes. There we are, that's, that's only in the order of business or for the council meetings.
I mean, maybe in 113.02, you could add it in there that it'd make that a, a function of the job of the council clerk, will prepare minutes and it might be reworded in there, prepare the minutes for the next committee meeting.
Well, 113.02 is just regarding the legislative class.
Okay, I didn't, I don't have the full, I guess I do have it back here, I was looking at my.
I would think we need another subchapter, whatever they're called, regarding the minutes that we need anything, because 113.02 looks like a, that just has four pages long, but it just refers to the request from the legislative.
Okay. So we could create a new subparagraph for that then, Rob? That spells out what we just discussed.
You know, if you look at 111.18 where you have the order of business for council meetings, you could have a A section and a B section and the order of business for committee meetings would be committees approve their minutes at the beginning of each committee.
I like that.
And then a very, very short sweep, but.
So B would be the committee and that would be approve their minutes and then.
Priseman's.
And then take care of business on their day.
Yeah, or pass for common, maybe, I don't know.
One, one eleven.
So does you want 118, you have an A for council and a D for?
All right.
You wanna be the person?
I like that. Uh, 111-21, council rules for security. Previously in the codified ordinance that had the mayor listed here, wherein our rules that have the police chief, so just to make them both, uh, the same, 111-21 should be changed to the chief of police or his or her designated man, shy of the her there, who missed it in the earlier one. Shall preside as a sergeant-at-arms at all council and committee meetings, and sergeant-at-arms will carry out all orders given by the council president or presiding member for the purpose of maintaining order at city council or committee meetings, but under the paragraf that states the same. Any questions on that one? 113.02A, council clerk shall prepare a request for legislation, request for legislation form that the committee chairperson of the sponsored committee will sign once the legislation is approved and packed by council, that used to say that the committee chairperson would prepare that. So that just makes it actually what we are doing. 113.02B, council clerk will, and the rest of the paragraph remains the same, number 10. At number 10, and be sure the completed form of all papers attached is submitted to the law director's office no later than 8:30 on Tuesday, the week before, the week of the regularly scheduled council meetings or sooner than possible. So what Todd did was go through all that and just basically cleaned it up, the language for what he's actually doing, so it's not changing any of his workflow, it's putting it in the ordinance what his workflow truly is. And that is all that I have for suggested changes. Does anybody else have any others or any questions on that?
Mr. Chair, I would suggest if a motion is made and seconded and approved to draft legislation, I would suggest maybe we see the draft before we go on.
I would agree. I like that. Do we need to see that in another committee, ad hoc committee meeting to have a discussion to make sure we're okay with it? If so, we could just have an ad hoc committee meeting with 15 minutes before the next council meeting?
Well, yes.
They've got a five-week launch, so. We've got a good bit of legislation for the next council meeting anyways.
What's that?
We've got a good bit of legislation for the next.
Well, there's nothing in here that is so urgent that it's not gonna change the way we're doing business right now.
I got a question. So on the legislation that is pre-made up, and, and let's say it was drawn up as regular and we're in the council meeting and this piece of regular legislation is sitting here and it comes time to read it, Todd reads it, and then some member of council makes a motion to suspend the rules and that passes, or, or to set, suspend the rules and declare an emergency, but, but the regis, the resolution at hand never had the emergency writing in it. Can we still pass it as emergency?
Yeah, it just has to be noted in the record that it was passed as emergency and it's finally made. It, it, it works both ways, cause even when they are led to emergency and we decide not to, we go back out, so. It goes both ways. Something comes up last day later.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if that wording was, had to be in there in the actual resolution that it said emergency in order to actually pass this emergency in case something changes.
It just has to be, it has to be a record that it's clear, um, and, and the reason for the emergency. The, the reasons for the emergency are, are pretty broad and, uh, I think, I think there's even some case law out there that says that, that emergency is essentially whatever city council says it is. So it's, it's broad, it's broad language, but.
Any questions, Mark?
Amy? And I would entertain a motion to request legislation.
Request a draft.
A draft legislation for us to review at a, at another ad hoc committee prior to the next council meeting, uh, so that we could then send it on, so if we agree with everything, so. All favors, yeah.
Thanks.
Motion carries. The only two that are on.
As soon as I ask, I do.
Uh, 7:26 PM will adjourn the ad hoc committee and item number four is public participation. Is there anything that any of you wish to say?
Oh, 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 should I say to you, one beat a second to you? What do you think about?
What's that?
Like, how about a second to you about the COVID?
And, and your opinion?
Anything? Do you want me to read anything over?
So, yeah, I saw that you have some information on the coronavirus, um, you're asking my opinion?
Yeah, and cause you're a public.
I think it's good information for us to have, um, to look through and we've got some stuff that's the announcers from the, from the state and as well as from the Ohio Municipal League. You know, bottom line, I think it's, uh, it's something that our health department has their, their finger on the pulse of this very well. We have representation from this body, uh, on the health department, uh, board and I think we're, we're in tune with what's going on. I don't think that there's anything else that we as a council can't do or need to other than just be informed.
I was, I was wondering if maybe somebody from the health department would wanna come to maybe speak at the next meeting, it depends on.
I, I can ask Kate Seaford.
If you want to add.
If it ever comes to that.
Exactly, if it comes to that, well, fingers crossed, please, but.
Yeah. All right, um, just, I don't know if this is the right time to bring this up, but, uh, that training for the Ohio Municipal League, Candy and me so far gone, it's on the weekend of, uh.
March 21st.
Yeah.
You'll know March 21st.
The new, new officials training?
Yes, you will know. The deadline is, uh, next, this, tomorrow's the last call of this for the new members because I need to, um, reserve, reserve, yes. It's not mandatory, um, it, we do pay for it, um, so it's up to you. The only thing that's mandatory is the public records training which we're doing here at the library and later.
More strategic than the library. For what it's worth, I'm glad that I went to it, I learned a lot. It was very good, I, I was, I loved one of those meetings and I was like, I didn't think, I, I think true was a bad thing to go.
I have a goal all weekend.
We already did one scheduled at the library, professional desk.
You explain to Sharon why I'm up to Kate's.
Are we, so the public records training is on the 25th, 20th and roll on that during the day? Are we supposed to have one on the first too? Are they both gonna be options or no?
Public records training, uh, it's, it's a 25th. And, uh, there was an email that I ordered everyone, uh, wishing this need to respond to the C R, the state, federal's office, and, uh, I can forward it to you, Mark, if you don't have it.
Yeah, I, I'm turned out on there, I just wanted to know, is there, I'm starting a new job, so I just figured out options to be able to go super early day.
Okay, as far as the O and L training, um, I know who's gonna do it, so I would go with you, but all four of us? All four of us?
Out. Oh, it's a Saturday, why not?
It is.
Can we draw a picture down here?
Yeah, listen. How do you draw?
Awesome, I got zero points.
You know, I don't believe you.
I, I.
I haven't crashed for a while.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Is that, that, that's not like a form or something that we're all saying?
21st, I'm sorry.
21st, Saturday, the 21st.
Registration starts at 8:30 and then, um.
Make, make sure everybody's done, has everybody got anything else to bring up? Lisa, anything else? Candy? Mark? Jim? All right, I'm going to entertain a motion to, I thought, done, ask, entertain a motion to, so who? All in favor, Sam?
Yes.
What was the saying?